All right.
Just get them into work.
Okay. That's right. Slayed. Okay. Oh, are all the name tags? Are we having technical difficulties? Don't break your leg. Okay. All right. Good afternoon. I would like to call the February 7th, 2018, meeting of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission to order, please. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Danielle Henderson. Here. Michael DiMartini.
Here.
Bill Howe. Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Inlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh.
Here.
Miki Hazelwood. John Martini.
Here.
Darren Price. Dave Solero.
Here.
Mervyn Wright. John Zimmerman.
Here.
Harry Fonstock. Thomas Payette.
Here.
Mylan Nugayan. Cindy Turcheck. Ron Penrose. We have a call. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number two, public comments. It looks like I have one card. I'd like to call Kathy Brandhorse to the stand, please. The podium, not the stand. That sounds way too official, sorry, yeah. Sorry. It's like a courtroom drama.
You said Brandhorse, right?
I did, yes. You're welcome. I'm sorry, ma'am.
That's okay.
And you have three minutes, please. Okay.
Let's see. My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, I have not moved out of C Street. But prior to that, I did move out of C Street, and I'm now working with the Police Department to get me back home where I was, and that was Sky Mountain. I could not remember where I was living because of the bullet holes in Sky Mountain. I had over 50,000 bullets in my body to steal my house. And so I just wanted to let you know, I'm working with the Police Department so I could get back home to Sky Mountain. But right now, I'm still living on C Street, and we're still having this problem with people who do not pay their employees their payroll checks. They like to steal the payroll checks because they know that they are not employed, they have never been employee either, and so they seem to steal other people's payroll checks, and they work very hard for their payroll checks, and you do too. And so you expect your payroll check every time that you work. Well, this one man, he never received his payroll check with four-wheel parts, and he is now being murdered. He's been tortured. He's also been put back together as a robot, a small robot, maybe about that tall. And you don't know how awful it is just to ask for his payroll check. This man, he has never been hired, but he starts punching the employee in the face and told him he's not going to get his payroll checks. And this man's been working for a couple of months or maybe more, and he does not get his payroll checks. Instead, he has been set on fire. Also, we noticed in the trailer where he is living now, the trailer has been set on fire where he was just sleeping in his bed. And not only that, the trailer was full of blood, and his flesh was splattered all over the trailer. We did not find his body, because there wasn't much left of his body. Yes, he also used some sort of iron to beat him until he was dead.
Okay. Moving on to item number three, approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion? Motion by Commissioner Solero, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Flansburgh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, item number four, approval of the minutes from the December 6th, 2017 meeting. Again, do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Solero, do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, it's a race. Who wants to? Second by Commissioner Martini. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, item number five, report on Phase One of the Regional Stormwater Drainage Network Geographic Information System Mapping Project. And I'll turn it over to Jim and our guest speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have Dr. Jeremy Smith from Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency here to give a report on, essentially the final report, on Phase One of the work to compile a stormwater system GIS for the region. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you, yeah. For the record, Jeremy Smith, Regional Planning. Thanks for having me here today. Good afternoon. Is this thing working? Great, okay. I don't have a clicker, so I guess, oh, thank you very much. Reading my mind, impressive. Okay, so here to report back on the work we did to look at the stormwater coverage of GIS data in the region that I was here before you, probably about six months ago, to talk about initially. I've called this draft results, because there is a little bit of work left to finish up for, kind of folding into a final report that's still underway, but the crux of it is here today for you. So, again, the initial objective, so the Western Regional Water Commission tasked, asked us at Regional Planning if we would look into the GIS, sort of state of affairs of stormwater data, how it's being tracked, and what we have with regard to coverage in a GIS of all of our stormwater features that are out there conveying stormwater. Initially, they asked me to kind of scope three phases to sort of identify, or maybe I came up with the three phases, but, you know, initially, can we get the data together and see what we have, and then kind of assess where we would need to go from there to complete it to a given level that we think is complete? And then are there other layers that we don't have that could be useful, like impervious surfaces or stuff coming off the hillsides, that sort of thing? And so it was, you know, I think per your recommendation to some degree as well, pretty clear that we should move forward with the first phase and fund that, just to kind of benchmark, you know, where we're at. And so that's what we've done. For that assessment, Phase One, we could call it, these are the areas, this is the study area, basically, we decided to break the study area up by the hydrobasins, given that, you know, the nature of the subject matter is related to hydrologic flow, it made sense to look at it in terms of the hydrobasins, focus on, obviously, the developed metro areas, the TMSA, that's something we have at Regional Planning, Truckee Meadows Services area, but also Washoe Valley, which falls out of our TMSA. And most of the north valleys are in that, but they are a little bit different from, say, the flood project, which I believe is just centered around the main big basin for the Truckee River. So, those are the areas that we looked at. And initially, let's go right to kind of the, sort of averaged overview results. And so these are how the basins stack up against each other in terms of what we're calling completeness of the availability of GIS features to describe what's actually on the ground. So I want to make sure that I'm clear that this map does not tell us about what is on the ground. This map tells us about what we have in the GIS to track the kind of infrastructure pieces we have put out on the landscape. And I think what you can see is that, you know, obviously, the Truckee Meadows proper, the large hydro basin there, is an area that is not high on the list. And so that's an area that's very developed. We know we do have stormwater conveyance features all over that area, but the mapping could use a little bit of work there. Likewise, up in the Cold Springs Basin, similarly, right? We need to look at what we're tracking as far as features. But, you know, overall, this is how it breaks down with what we're calling completeness. And, you know, you might ask, well, what do these numbers mean? And how did you get there, Jeremy? So the numbers are pretty relative, but here's the story of how we got to those numbers. First off, we tried to get everything that we could from the staff and you guys that work at the entities that manage stormwater. And so we did a big data collection effort where we talked to as many folks as we knew would have this information and got the GIS files and brought them in-house. And then we wanted to think, well, how are we going to know if we have these features mapped where they need to be mapped? Because that's kind of the whole question. So we used development as a proxy, and that's what this bold assumption is saying. And, you know, I think it's a general assumption, it's probably pretty good, there may be some nuance that's being missed there, but there, you know, our assumption is there's a relationship between where we have developed and where we're going to need to have stormwater conveyance features. And so if we know about development, on the one hand, which we do with dwelling units and roads and building square footage from the assessor and that kind of a thing, we should have some, you know, inclination to understand then, how much stormwater conveyance features should we have in that area? If you have one house on 40 acres, you might not need as much as if you have 40 houses, right? So that was the kind of main assumption. To get at that, we created an analysis grid where basically we took the developed area, you can kind of see it in the background, in the hydrobasins there, divided up all the landscape into quarter-mile squares, a grid, basically. And then we went so far as to clip every grid square, right? And measure the road lengths inside there, the number of dwelling units and business units, and then also aggregate square footages. So we had per square these measures of development. Of course, we also had the GIS data describing that. And so the first thing we did before we even looked at the quantitative stuff was just a visual assessment. Part of the funding was for an intern named Tyler Smith, a great guy. He went through and looked at each one of these quarter-mile squares, probably at least twice, if not three times, right? Giving him the visual overview, because, oh, we didn't think about that, so go back through. And this is what came of that, three categorizations from his visual assessment. And those are, in the blue, seems like we have a sufficient amount of stormwater data in that square to match what I'm seeing in the imagery and, you know, in the data with regard to development. And if you see a yellow square, that's an area where there is stormwater data present in that square, but it doesn't seem sufficient based on that visual review of the imagery underlying and all other stuff. And then there's the gray squares, which there just didn't seem to be any stormwater data available in a GIS format for those areas, based on our initial data gathering. And so I just show you this to know that underneath all of these squares that you see, we really do have, you know, all of the pieces of data mapped out on the streets with the imagery, and we were using that info. So that's the visual assessment, but we don't want to stop there, because we, you know, GIS is all about being quantitative and measuring things, right? So we wanted to calculate ratios that compare the occurrence of development features to the occurrence of stormwater features. And this is really kind of a relative assessment sort of a thing, but you can get at it right here with this idea that each one of these squares is a quarter-mile grid square. And I'm taking an oversimplified example here, but you could imagine 47 housing units with five manholes, right, for stormwater conveyance, there's five manholes, versus 470 housing units and five manholes. You know, if you just do the math on that with some division, you can see that you get these ratio values, 9.4 and 94. Well, in this case, 94, we would have said, that's less complete than a 9.4, right? That's kind of the general directionality of this assessment. And so here's actually what we looked at across all of the different connections. We looked at six different ratio values. So we started with the three development features I mentioned, in the building square footage, the road length, and then the number of points for both dwellings and businesses. And then we compared each of those to the existence of stormwater line features in that same square, and then also to stormwater point features. So we ended up getting six ratio measurements. Now, those ratios needed to be standardized, and I apologize, the fonts don't seem to translate here, but basically, the ratios needed to be standardized so they could be compared against each other, right? And we did that by taking the average and dividing, basically. So in each case, we standardized by the average. But what it did was it allowed us to do an apples-to-apples comparison and basically average across all of those different measurements to get this map that you see here, which is a more sort of quantitative assessment of where we have more complete coverage of stormwater data, down to where the coverage is less complete. And I think anything you see that's in that darker blue color, we're probably doing very good. It's not really that different than Tyler's visual assessment, but there is a difference in the sense that now we have a prioritization scheme kind of built in. If we feel like we want to move forward and address areas where we think we might have the most egregious lack of GIS data, this will help guide that going forward. Now, you may say, Jeremy, how did you get, how did you color all these squares? Because in fact, there were a bunch of squares that had no data, right? They didn't have any stormwater data, but we did have development features in those areas. And so by looking at, you know, the total number of grid squares where we did have both kinds of features, stormwater and development, we were able to fit this model curve you see there. And so anywhere that we didn't have data, we used the curves for each of those relationships as a proxy to then fill in the ratio value based on the number of development features that were there. So, in essence, what we're saying is, when I mentioned earlier, not all these squares are created equally, right? And the lack of any stormwater data in the GIS is not necessarily bad, right? You could have very little development that doesn't require stormwater conveyance, or you could have quite a bit of development where you don't have any data and you really know that you need to get in there and probably suss that out. So that's what we did there to kind of give every cell a value. And then back to this map. So then if you average it all up, take all those squares, and you take the average ratio value that's standardized, and you apply it to the basins, this is how we get this ranking. And so this is just kind of an easy way to think about where we probably want to invest our efforts to bring, to fill in the gaps, and it's those lighter colored shapes where we have the most gaps in our data. Okay, so that was not all that we did and looked at, but that was sort of all that I thought you might want to listen to, right? Basically, we also looked at attribute fields. There's, we probably had 20 or 30 different stormwater feature classes coming in that we had to negotiate with, and they all had different attribute tables. And so we looked at, you know, which attributes seemed to pop in all of them? And maybe those are important ones we should have, you know, in most everything, and then what are these other ones? Are they important? What are they? And how filled up are they with data? You might have 100 records, but if only two records have data points in them, right? We have all of that calculated. We also looked at aerial features, things like retention basins or ponds, that sort of, because that came with the stormwater data. You know, we didn't feel like that was a fair comparison to put that on the landscape, right? Because you don't need to have those retention basins everywhere you have development necessarily. So we do have that compiled into one feature class that will be available for folks that want to get at this data, but we didn't do the assessment, per se, with the polygon features. We did look at topological connectivity, and that's really just do lines connect to each other? Could you imagine, you know, flowing something through there? And in a lot of cases, they did, and of course, in a lot of cases, they didn't. There's opportunities for connection around jurisdictional boundaries. There's opportunities to connect things around where, say, NDOT has a small buffered area around their roads they manage where they've got really good stormwater mapping, but then there's nothing, right? And so as we go to build in those GIS components of what's actually on the ground, we would want to connect that stuff together so it's actually snapped, so there's an assessment of that. And then still really working on the bottom two, but trying to understand, you know, just kind of from a proximity perspective, where the stormwater features that we've installed, the infrastructure we've built, where does that have a chance to, you know, where's it going into streams? And where does it have potentially the chance to flow water into these irrigation ditches that might not be able to handle that flow? That was a concern that was given to me. So we're trying to have an assessment of that in there, understanding of, you know, where the ditches are mapped, obviously, who maintains them, and that kind of thing as well. So that's all forthcoming in the final report, which I'd be happy to come back and talk more about, or you could just read as a sleep aid. So some initial conclusions here, you know, I think we're pretty far along, actually, in creating what I would dub a schematic view of stormwater features that are actually out in the landscape, us having them in a GIS. You know, we're about 60% there when you add up all those squares. We're about 20%, the other 20%, we have data for, but probably needs a little work. And then there's 20% that just doesn't have data that we'll need to think about, do we want to capture that? But realistically, we're over the majority, right? We're well on our way towards having this really complete schematic view of helping us manage our stormwater systems. We kind of talked about where it's not as good as other places with that map, so I'll skip that. Next steps, we're working on, we're working through some of this today, actually. We have, obviously, a GIS server. We want to serve this data back up to folks that are interested in the public sector here that will use it. So we're working on an online map, and obviously, the final report will be available on a webpage that kind of encapsulates everything that we've done, so you can go and see this presentation, see the data, download the data. We have a very clean data dictionary of all the fields we added, so you can track the methodology. And also, this is day one, really. I mean, this is the benchmark position of now we know where we are. I'm imagining that just putting this out there for folks such as yourselves to look at, you'll say, ah, well, Jeremy, down here, we have all of this stuff, you didn't get that, so now put that in there. And then, in fact, in about six months, if we continue to collect data that probably is still out there, the picture will look a little better. And then, of course, we'll have to decide, how are we going to move forward and collect stuff that we just really don't have in any kind of digital format? And that sort of leads to the next slide here. I'll go to the second bullet first. And that is to continue to meet with Public Works folks, staff from the jurisdictions to present these findings and talk about a path forward. I mentioned earlier, when I came and visited you about this in the beginning, that we're doing the regional plan update at Regional Planning, and it's been fairly taxing as far as time and resources, right? So it's been difficult to, I knew we were going to be juggling a bit to get this done, and I think we've been doing that, but obviously, we have resource constraints at Regional Planning, we're not a giant outfit. And so in the next phase, if we want to think about how we want to go out into the community and collect this stuff with GPS units and that sort of thing, we're really going to need help from folks that are subject matter experts on stormwater to help, you know, probably go collect that information. We're happy to play an admin role from a GIS perspective and, you know, do that role, but we're not, we're just not staffed to go out there and collect that kind of stuff. But I know that a lot of your jurisdictions and agencies are, so hopefully, we can work together as the WRWC recommends or, you know, wishes. And then finally, up top there, you know, we're not doing this work in a vacuum, we're working with folks with several initiatives that are addressing stormwater. One is the One Truckee River 2018 Action Plan. I saw some of your faces at the big meeting that we had the other day, and, you know, we're interfacing with that. Obviously, this information we've put together would be available to help that effort. Likewise, there's a Regional Watershed Management Plan Update. We've talked with Terry and Stantec and folks from the City of Reno, Teresa Jones, at one point about that, and that really is going to help, I think, fill in the hillside kind of portion that I mentioned earlier, so that's really nice. And then what's really cool is that the initial funding to get this stormwater thing going, you know, some of it was hardware and software, because we had to onboard an intern in addition to what we're already doing. Well, we're already leveraging that hardware and software that was funded to help with the NDEP-funded Source Water Protection Program. So we're helping with that, we have the same intern going there, so we're leveraging the tech to do more, you know, water-related work. So that's exciting. With that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay.
You may have a lot, or none.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Jeremy.
Sure.
We really appreciate it. And this item is styled for possible action. I know we're going to have some discussion on an item, let's see, on item seven, you know, for some of our future work priorities, but if you all have questions for Jeremy, or if you'd like to discuss this item and provide some direction to staff, feel free. Go ahead.
I'm trying to get it done within about a month from now. So in anticipation of the next, before the next Western Regional Water Commission, you guys, some of you were there, and obviously, there was a time constraint, and I was going to give this presentation, but it kind of got truncated to some degree, so I'm hoping to go back and get a little more of the story, and I want the final report to be ready for that. Sure.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion? We could accept the report and choose to not give any further direction at this time, if you all are comfortable with that?
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Okay, motion from Commissioner Flansburgh.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Martini. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay. Moving on to item number six, discussion and possible approval of a recommendation from the Regional Effluent Management Team to approve a scope of work from Data Instinct's public outreach consultants and funding in an amount not to exceed $25,000 from the Regional Water Management Fund for the first phase of communication and outreach service and assistance related to regional affluent management planning. And if approved, to authorize the program manager to execute an agreement with Data Instincts for that purpose and possible direction to staff. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Smitherman.
Thank you. This recommendation comes from Effluent Management Strategy Team that's been meeting roughly twice a month to talk about alternatives for managing effluent across the region, but mostly focused, or at least initially focused, on TUMORF and STUMORF, so Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility and South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. One of the alternatives that has taken quite a bit of time and effort of the team is the concept of indirect potable reuse. And as we move that item forward, it becomes discussed more and more openly in meetings and among members of the public and the development community. And it has occurred that, to the team, that now is the time for us to move forward on paying closer attention to messaging, public education, outreach, and then agency staff education and outreach to them as well, so that we are unified in our message as far as indirect potable reuse, what that means to the community and what it doesn't mean, at least immediately, to the community. And so we have, let's see, largely due to the efforts of Rick Warner from county, he has been working with a team of experts that he's convened for all of us to work with, who are nationally and internationally renowned for their work in indirect potable reuse, one of which is the principal of this firm, Data Instincts, who has worked with some firms, some agencies in California in their efforts towards implementing indirect potable reuse. So he is quite highly qualified to help us in developing strategies and messaging type of work for, like I said, agency staff and the public. And so the team asked him for a proposal, and that proposal is attached to your staff report. So they would be, if approved, Data Instincts would be helping us with developing messaging and then message materials if we wished, providing guidance as far as best practices and strategies to educate both agency staff and the public, and then to respond to inquiries and questions from the public. And then also establishing this commission, the Western Regional Water Commission, as reliable sources of information. So again, it's kind of branding and imaging, and then ancillary graphic support and things like that would be available from that firm as well. As far as what we would be getting for the $25,000 initial installment, I didn't include the fee schedule, but the principal who we'd be working with probably most of the time bills out about $195 an hour. Associate work is between $145 and $165 an hour, and then other graphics, clerical, media coordination is 85 to 120 an hour. So boiling that down, if we worked exclusively with the principal, we would get about 128 hours or 16 days of work from him, 16 eight-hour days from him for the initial $25,000. Now, the concept is that we would probably not be done after that initial 128 hours of work, but this would be to get us started as soon as possible this fiscal year. We do have $25,000 that we can draw on in funds that were earmarked for indirect potable reuse work that we could obligate for this contract. You can see at the bottom of the page that the scope of work, that completion date is just hypothetically, December 31st, 2018. We would probably not make it quite that far, but I think that we would get through the end of this fiscal year, so the next five months or so, and then maybe a little bit into the following fiscal year, by which time we could take a more complete scope of work that might look out a couple of years to the Western Regional Water Commission and ask them for authorization to move forward on more robust effort along these lines. So that's probably more than you wanted to know. There might be questions from the commission, but again, this is styled for your approval and direction to me to execute an agreement for that consultant's work. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Do we have any questions regarding this? No? Go ahead.
Just a comment. Mark Milan Milan was at our expert panel meeting, it was about two weeks ago. Mark Milan Milan was at our expert panel meeting, it was about two weeks ago, and a number of, I don't know, anyone else, I know Jim, you were there, but there were representatives from Sparks, Reno, the county, and so forth, and it was a meeting that lasted from about 8:30 in the morning until 3:00 or 3:30 in the afternoon. And I think the feedback I got from that was, the expert panel that the county has put together, really with a lot of input from others, I mean, is really a very valuable tool to all of us because of the lessons learned that they've gone through with other municipalities, and Mark is very well-respected within the industry nationally, and I think we're very fortunate to have someone like that on our team. So with that, I would make a recommendation to approve the contract not to exceed $25,000 with Data Instincts.
Go ahead.
So I missed the workshop the last time that we met, but having reviewed the notes and agenda item we're going to have coming up, the reclaimed water planning was the number-one priority of this group, of those that were voting and took part of that workshop. And with that, I think this is a very good next step, and I would second that motion.
Okay. Well, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and before I open it up for discussion, I do have a public comment card from Ms. Kathy Brandhorst. So Ms. Brandhorst, if you'd come down for your public comment.
Yes, it can be a public comment.
Okay. And this item is on the Regional Effluent Management Team and its public outreach efforts. And you have three minutes, and the microphone is very high.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. I just wanted to tell you, you know, the scope of work. We are testing the water and purifying the water so you can drink it, so you can use it for your purposes, like cooking. And it's going to, not to exceed $25,000, oh yes, it will be, because you're taking our water out of our rivers and out of our reservoir, and you're taking it back to Sioux Falls, South Dakota, for your purposes. You still owe Reno lots and lots of money for the water that you're using here and pay nothing. You have not paid nothing to Reno at all. You're all claiming you lived in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Well, where's our money? You know, we're paying, we're not going to pay nothing to Sioux Falls, South Dakota to steal our water out of here and then take it back over to Sioux Falls, South Dakota because you don't have no running water. You don't even have a sewer line yet. I saw all those poles and wires going from Reno all the way down to Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I even watched you put them up, and the wires are picking up all the water from Reno. You know, we just took the water out of, back out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and brought it back to our area because you're stealing it. You haven't paid us nothing for it at all in order to take that water out of here. You paid absolutely nothing. In other words, you don't have the money. The money is really poor in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I already saw the big, long line, already begging for food. You must bring that food back here to Reno. You're stealing our food out of here. You're trying to close us down. Is that what this purpose is? You're closing down the whole city of Reno so that Sioux Falls, South Dakota, has something to eat? I hope not, because we're going to charge you, we're going to sue, uh, I can't think, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, thank you, for our money that you're stealing out of here too.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the commission. I have a motion from Commissioner Enlow and a second from Commissioner Flansburgh. Is there any further discussion by the commission? No? Okay, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And moving on to item number seven. Report on the December 6, 2017 NNWPC Priority Setting Workshop, including Presentation of Results, Review of Draft Professional Services Budget Detail, Incorporating Priority Results to Be Included in the Western Regional Water Commission Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Tentative Budget, and Possible Direction to Staff. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Smitherman and Mr. Wessel.
Okay, thank you. In your staff report, you can see that we've got a two-page results printout of the actual prioritization exercise. So on one side of the form, we have a priority by category, so that would be the general budget category that goes into the tentative budget, regional reclaimed water planning, regional stormwater planning, et cetera. And then below that, the actual project identifications that were voted on as well. And then, on the opposite side, we composited those, Mr. Wessel composited those, this is his good work, showing you the total votes per category and then the breakdown by project, either actual project or project kind of concept, and then how those rolled up as far as the voting. So I think that as far as the individual voting on the projects and on the categories, they lined up relatively well, where we didn't have a, one individual project that was ranked very, very high, but that the category was ranked very, very low. I guess the exception would be regional flood planning, where we had a fairly high-ranked kind of concept that we would look into flooding from the irrigation ditches, and that was the only project idea, and actually ranked that category down the list, but still, I would draw from that, that that individual project concept is fairly important because it ranked very high as far as the individual project voting. So then, so that is what we would present to you as far as the results of your voting, those commissioners who were present at the workshop, that is. So this is probably a pretty good cross-section, but it's not a complete composite of every commissioner's input, just those who were present. And then, Chris and I worked together to try to reflect that into the second page in the handout. In the staff report is actually a mock-up of the budget detail for professional services, the projects budget that would go into the tentative budget. You'll see the tentative budget for your review and possible recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission next meeting in March, so this is a first cut at what that projects page would look like. And so, what we tried to do was layer in your voting along with projects that are in this year's budget, actually, and what we believe the direction from the Western Regional Water Commission has been in the past. And so, one inconsistency that you would identify right off the bat is the prioritization of cloud seeding and cloud seeding monitoring is at the bottom of the list as far as the prioritization workshop, but we still include funding for it up here at the top of the page on the budget detail. And that is because we still think, as staff, that the Western Regional Water Commission might be holding the course or their status quo as far as prioritizing that as a project to fund, if the past is any indication of the future, and then especially looking at how this winter is shaping up as far as snowpack generation. If Chris and I were thinking, the commission wants to send the message that now you should probably zero this out, not fund this project, we'd like that to come from you as an action, and most especially next month, when we look at the tentative budget, for sure. So this month, what we're looking for is your input as far as, should we be moving money around earmarks essentially in this budget detail page that would better reflect the prioritization that you gave us?
Okay.
And so, with that, I understand that not everyone is probably acutely familiar with every project idea, concept, or description here on this page, so between Chris and I, we can probably come up with a fairly accurate description of what we were thinking as far as each one of these project ideas, and then maybe you could provide us direction as far as changing anything, if you would have us do that. So with that, I would hand this back to you, Madam Chair, for deliberation.
Okay, well, thank you, and thanks for putting together these results from our workshop. I would open it up to the commission for questions, comments, suggestions. Go ahead, Commissioner Flansburgh.
So Jim, looking this over, is it that the professional services budget you are recommending to us is the 1.84 million?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
And then, what, not having the rest of the budget documents here to understand what we've already have committed out there, kind of where our fund balance is going to be, what do you anticipate where we're going to be with our fund balance?
If we were to spend all 1.84 million on these projects, plus all of our fixed costs for staff, overhead, et cetera, we would still come in with about, is it three months? I think it's one-quarter reserve, it's about $400,000.
Right, that's about $400,000. Usually, we shoot for that number, about $400,000, just a little under that is what we usually, what we're required to keep. I think it's a six-month operating cost is what they ultimately agreed to, the Western Regional Water Commission, and that's about $400,000. That's what keeps the doors open for six months.
Okay, I just wanted to have that parameter there, so it is contemplated, then we could afford to do this program as you have laid out, but we'll have all of the budget information next time we meet.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Go ahead, Commissioner Solaro.
Jim, I've just got one item, the stormwater GIS mapping item that is on here. Is that related to what Mr. Smith just presented to us, where we just basically accepted a report and didn't give further direction to do more work, or is there something, is that a separate project that I'm thinking of?
No, that's the same project, and that is just, you know, us with our crystal ball thinking that this was a priority for the Western Regional Water Commission. They may want to direct some more work to be done, so, and that's, and the amount is really not quite out of thin air, but it's between, working with Jeremy and I, we were thinking, you know, the next level of effort will be greater than what he was able to do this time, and so that's kind of the number that we ended up with. But that one is quite soft as far as me justifying that exact amount.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, Commissioner Enlow.
So one of the things that I think Mr. Flansburgh noted earlier, but our highest priority was on the, really, the wastewater reclaim water planning effort, but that is not where the largest amount of funding is targeted. So just a comment, it seems like there's somewhat of a mismatch there if we're really aiming at tackling some of the reclaimed water issues. Just as a side note, this second-line climate variability data assessment, personally, I don't think that is necessary at this time because there's a very significant project going on with DRI and USGS with the Water for the Seasons project, and so I would rather rely on that information than have another potential hydrology to consider. So, I mean, I would not be in support of that $50,000 at this time. I think we could do what we need to do with the evaluation that's being conducted presently. Thank you.
Perhaps a question that's going to open Pandora's box, but we work for the work, so how much, if at all, should we consider what their priorities might be? I mean, we can make whatever decisions we want here, but if we send it to them, they say, yeah, nice, but you're going to fund cloud seeding, so get over it. Hypothetically, I mean, we're wasting, we're wasting time and effort, right? Or am I confused?
No, no, you're not confused, and you're doing a good job of describing the world of tension that Chris and I live in. You are the technical advisory body, and so my impression is that you carry sway with the Western Regional Water Commission. However, they are the boss, they are in charge, and so they could say, you know, thank you for your recommendation, but this is how the funding is going to lay out. But the way that we see it, it's your job to send them the message of where you think the priority should be, from where you sit as senior staff-level people and as the technical advisory board. You can do that and, you know, give it to Chris and I as the messengers and see what happens, you know, and then we'll bring you back, or you'll see what happens at the meeting. But I think you've described it well. I don't think you're wasting your time with recommendations. I think that is what your charge is. And then, let the chips fall where they may when it's time for actual budget approval.
I was just going, am I on here? Going to add to that, that, yeah, it's not a waste of time because over the 10-year period we've been doing this, the Water Commission has a long history of following your recommendations. 99% of the time, there's been a couple of things they wanted to do on their own, but they're pretty much on board with their technics, technical experts, which is this panel. Thank you.
Well, let's see, if we don't have any further discussion, I mean, somebody would, oh, okay, all right, calm down. Would you like to go first?
So I just had a question. There's a lot of specificity in here, and I guess my question is, do we really need to have that level of detail? I mean, there's certain things, such as the Advanced Water Treatment Demonstration Project that we've committed to with UNR, that that's really a contract in place that we're moving forward with, but we've got dollars associated with a number of different projects, and I think there's a lot of overlap between reclaimed water planning and wastewater planning. I'm wondering if we could combine the, those subjects, those areas of investigation, and maybe just identify some of the, okay, this is a firm commitment of what we have allocated towards this effort, and then have, I'll just say, a rounder dollar associated with, say, reclaimed water planning, and I'm just going to throw in a half a million dollars. That would be, we would come back to the Western Regional Water Commission at a later date with specific recommendations on how we want to spend that money on what particular project at that time, because I think it's premature for any of us to really say, what's the highest priority and how are we going to allocate dollars to these projects right now? But could we have some flexibility by doing it that way?
We could, we could, and you identify another kind of world of tension that Chris and I live in. The more specificity that we can provide the county budget system, the happier they are, at least working through the accounting section in our department. But we could work with them on some more general categories, and as you said, I think that's a good idea, to try to leave some rounder number for a category that could be delineated further as far as actual projects, and then just be more firm as far as dollar amounts that are committed in agreements, such as the advanced water treatment. So we could try to implement that suggestion in what we bring you next month.
Did you want additional? Go ahead.
Jim, a question for you. The $262,500 that you showed for our, basically, Stormwater Discharge Permit Coordinating Committee, I remember that being last year's number, because we are in a permit cycle that has been delayed, from what I understand, over a year, while the state works through NDOTs permit. Has that number gone down? Have we talked with that company?
That number has remained the same for probably, how long has it been? Eight years?
Since the inception of Northern Nevada Water Park.
That's our yearly number.
That's our operating budget. That's our operating budget.
So, just the line item above that, the MPDS Stormwater Permit Update, that might be the location.
That's where we separated it?
Yep.
And a lot of the elements that are within the stormwater category are basically operated and dictated by the Stormwater Committee. When they need one-off projects like a permit update, or the Watershed Management Plan update, that's what those extra funds are added in there. And that is one of the reasons we're waiting on some of those projects to, you know, kind of clear the decks, and then we'd be back to the 262.5. And maybe right at the moment, it looks like that number's a little bit high, but we're just anticipating a few things that we know that are coming down the pike, so.
All right.
One other comment, if I could, on, as far as combining elements, we could actually, you know, we could kind of shrink this list down, I suppose, and kind of collapse it. But we should keep in mind that the legislation actually calls out for the six different elements that are listed here, in terms of, you know, reclaimed planning, stormwater, wastewater, water planning, flood planning, conservation, and the plan. And so the reason the budget is laid out the way it is, is to satisfy that element, and to make sure that, you know, from staff's perspective, that we actually address those issues. And whether or not we outline or specify any particular project is less important, but it is important that we provide an overall number for those overall categories. And in that vein, I wouldn't imagine combining any two of them. That breakout's done that way specifically to show that we're accounting for all that. Again, another issue, the bottom number on this project service budget of 1.8 million is going to be the number for the year. That's what we're projecting for, that's what we have available. Where that gets distributed in this list, you know, we try and show that we have purpose for all that money, and why we have that money outlined in here. But it doesn't have to stay the way it is. It can be moved now or even afterwards. Our only concern is that 1.8 million doesn't change, that number doesn't change. If that stays and is approved, and, you know, let's say in June, or let's say in August, you decide, hey, we've got this big project we want to do up in another area, we can transfer funds there to make that budget, we can do budget transfers. We're not restricted in that regard. So just a point for consideration.
Okay. Well, thanks for the clarification. Do we have any other comments or questions? Or would somebody like to, go ahead, Commissioner Enlow?
So what do we need, what do we have to bring back at the next meeting as far as a recommendation to the Water Planning Commission? And if we really don't decide today, how are we going to decide between today and next month?
You would take what we bring you next month, and then you could make recommendations on what I bring you next month, and say, no, Jim, I want it to go like this. I want this number changed to this, as long as we balance to the 1.84 million at the bottom. You could do that at that meeting. We would take note, we would change the spreadsheet, and that's what we would present to the Western Regional Water Commission. So this is the only page that would change in the overall tentative budget.
Yeah. I mean, I understand your issue with having to have dollars associated with the six different categories.
Right.
Again, just if there's some flexibility of what, and it sounds like there is, on what projects we actually decide to fund as we move through the year.
Right.
That's really what I'm looking for.
Yeah, and I, that's absolutely acceptable. And, you know, one of the things we, you know, one of the problems that we have, just being in a kind of a government atmosphere is that while this is a lofty goal, this budget itemization, it's just as a practical matter, you know, we don't know timing and how things can get accomplished. We just can't, you know, typically, we can't get to all these. So there's usually a lot of, you know, well, we'll push this to next year, or maybe we cancel this project, maybe we bring on another one. So there's a lot of flexibility in the budget from that perspective, and I think staff has usually been pretty good about being able to find budget where it's needed. And I don't think that this will be an exception, anyway.
If I could maybe layer in a little bit more as far as how you might direct us to move funding around, under, let's see, it's the second block of shaded.
It's a regional reclaim.
Yeah, that's the regional reclaimed water planning projects. The top line on that one, Integrated Wastewater Reclaimed Water Planning, $200,000. That's one of those general categories that we could split out some dollars, or leave it all intact as one project, depending on how the project recommendations would come out from you or from this affluent management team. If, let's see, your idea of combining reclaimed water planning and wastewater planning, if you look down to the wastewater planning projects near the bottom of the page, the first one is regional wastewater flow projections. That got a lot of votes in the prioritization, but as you remember, that's something that I'll be working with Jeremy Smith on. We probably don't need to allocate $20,000 to that project. That would be just an earmark for if something needed to be done for cost. But if it was the same kind of using the consensus forecast to generate wastewater flow numbers similar to what we did a year, year and a half ago, I think that would come at no cost, because we've already paid into the modeling software and hardware with regional planning. So if you wanted to move that amount up.
Well, I mean.
We could do that.
You kind of make my point in that I'd rather just list the projects without necessarily having a dollar associated with it.
Okay.
But have a total amount for these six different categories that, and then identify at least line items, because the regional affluent planning team, or management team, whatever we call ourselves, we're going to be coming back to this body next month with a recommendation for an additional scope of work for UNR to move forward with more reclaimed water master planning activities. And I realize that's not going to really take place until next fiscal year, but like I said, I just have, I like identifying the projects. I don't like tying a dollar to them at this point in time, but like I said, if everybody else is happy with it, I could live with it, if we've got the flexibility to move dollars when the appropriate priority and scope is identified at that time.
Right, right. And that's what Chris and I do, is if we come in with a scope of work that we've got a project concept and a dollar amount, and we come in under that amount, then we move that to a general category, for, under that planning category. If it's over, then we have to figure out where we can move some money from another category. It's just, you know, you're balancing your budget midstream, as we do. And you know that we've responded to requests in the past for, you know, mid-year adjustments to squeeze in a project that really wasn't anticipated. We do have the flexibility in doing that. As Chris mentioned, we can slide funds that are earmarked from one category to another within this spreadsheet, and as long as we're okay with the bottom amount, with total amount, yeah. We don't have to go through any official budget augmentation hearings to do anything like that.
So you have some clarifying comments?
No, I, maybe to emphasize a couple of things, just from the legal perspective, if flexibility is the goal, it's already built in this, as is. And I think Jim's hit that a couple of times. To the extent that these funds are not encumbered by contract, any category can be moved to another category, as long as we don't exceed the total budget. As far as the request of listing project without dollar amounts, that's certainly possible, except for the ones that are contractually committed, and those have to be put in the amount of the commitment. So I hope that clarifies a little bit. Thank you.
Commissioner Martini, and then Commissioner Enlow. You guys have to take turns.
Sorry.
I already let you go first.
I know, now you get to go.
Two questions. So, Jim, the 1.841 million, why, what's magic about that?
It's, well, Chris actually compiles the budget, so yeah.
Yeah, that.
You said you didn't want it to change?
No, no, that's what's available. That's, when I take out all the fixed costs, including, everything from staff and non-staff, routine operating budgets, I do an estimate to complete for the year, that's the remainder. And that's, we put that in, we try and utilize all the budget down. We have to reserve $400,000, that's required by our policies. And then this is what's remaining. So I know it's a weird number, I mean, I know I could have rounded it up, but you know what?
Engineer, I'm okay with, you know, down the pan.
And I have to deal with, I have to deal with the accounting.
So this is the max available, if you will, after all other considerations within the organization are considered?
That's correct.
Okay.
Cash reserves forward, revenue, fixed costs out, this is what's left to spend.
This is the part of money we could be dealing with.
Yeah.
Okay. Second question, perhaps, from Mr. Rhodes. While we have the six categories, is there anything that requires us to fund something in each category every year?
No, that.
Professional services.
I can't tell when this is on, I'm sorry.
I think you're.
It's on.
And those are there not because they're statutorily required, just because it's a ready reference to show that we're spending our money where the legislature has directed us to spend it. But year by year, no, there's no such requirement.
So we, as a recommending body, could move money as we see on a year-by-year basis where the need is?
You can make.
And we would not be violating state law or anything?
No. That's my best opinion, yeah. And you make the recommendations, and with the understanding, it's the final decision as far as moving funds rests with the Western Regional Water Commission.
So, third comment, then. Unlike my colleague to my right, I do like seeing line items with dollars on them. Inasmuch as we are tasked with making a recommendation for what we think this year, what needs to be funded under current contract, or what we see coming, operating as this Water Planning Commission going forward. So I'm not in favor of looking at general lump sums. To Jim's point with the tension, you know, cloud seeding, climate variability, those may be very important, but to us, maybe we feel there, for this coming year, they're not important this year, that we've got other tasks. I agree with John, I think, with Commissioner Enlow, I think as the Nevada Water Innovations Campus gets rolling, I think that in, you know, the small working affluent groups, things are going to change over the years. So flexibility, I'm glad to hear that. But I would also like to see this commission make a strong recommendation for what our vision is for the needs of the community for this year. And I think there is a lot of momentum with what we're going to do with affluent, how we're going to manage it. You know, not on an individual basis, but as a collective community.
Commissioner Enlow?
Mr. Enlow. So, my only concern, I guess, with specific dollar amounts on certain line items, I mean, we're having a lengthy discussion here, and we get it, but the Western Regional Water Commission will look at this, and they may have different perceptions of, well, you allocated $150,000 towards stormwater GIS mapping. I guess I'm fine with putting specific numbers down to it. Maybe if we emphasize the fact that these are preliminary numbers subject to change, and they can move around quite a bit, because I don't like the $100,000 expectation for cloud seeding right now either.
Wait till you hear the rest of my comment.
I know. I mean, DRI may, I can imagine what that comment is, and I may have similar thoughts. But like I said, there's a limited amount of money. I just want to make sure we're spending the money where the priority is. And I just don't.
For the coming year.
Exactly. And I just don't want to create some false expectations with the Western Regional Water Commission, or others, that, okay, there's this block of money set aside to do this work. That's my intent. So if we could capture that somehow, in how this is presented, I'm fine with that. I just don't want people to think that because there's $100,000 in a line item, that that dollar is specifically targeted for that purpose, until we actually have a contract in front of us and approve it.
Yeah.
That's.
Got your point.
Yeah.
One comment on that, just say.
You know, the Western Regional Water Commission, their legal requirement to the state, is my understanding from Ben Hutchins, who's our finance director, is when we, when they approve this, they're not actually approving all the line items, they're not approving any of that. We're just using this to show them how we got from point A to point B. Right, I got to show that, otherwise, you know, but the state document is interesting because it actually doesn't require anything but a number. And I, we just have to provide a number, and what we do with that number, once that's sent off to the state and approved, that's, they don't care. So there's actually two different elements that we're working with here. One is, what do we have to do in May, submit this budget, and then after that, we can use the money in whatever fashion that's appropriate within the legislation to fund. So to your point, I think we can do whatever we need to do.
Yeah, just to maybe help clarify Chris's point, this is technically a worksheet, as far as the state budget's concerned. You've probably seen the state budget forms. Ours is one page, professional services, because everything the Western Regional Water Commission does is by way of contract. Staff is by way of a contract with Washoe County. So as Chris said, there's one amount at the bottom, professional services. Within that, as long as we don't change that amount, we have the flexibility to change our subcategories within our worksheets.
Okay. So we've had some good discussion, and we've had some clarifying comments to hopefully increase some sort of comfort level, you know, that there is flexibility for us to revisit this over the year as proposals come before our commission. I'm not quite sure I have a suggestion on how to style a motion, you know, if somebody else has a suggestion. I mean, we've given some direction to staff, I think, as to different opinions. Does anyone, go ahead?
I'm going to float a very unpopular idea. So feel free to groan, fellow commissioners, but do we need to do a workshop between now and our next meeting to get together as a commission and fight this out? One thing I'd like to see, Jim, is this suggested professional services, I didn't have time, my apologies, I'd like to put the rankings where, you know, from your sheet before, to where we think they line up, so that we can make sure, you know, we're funding what we picked as our priorities. I think that's important.
Right.
We do have some contracts, those are obligated. We need to subtract that dollar out and see what's left, and then make sure we have funded correctly. That's my feeling, inasmuch as we're making a recommendation up to, you know, elected officials that we all serve.
Well.
So feel free to groan.
I'm fine with it.
Do any of the other commissioners have, so, okay.
That wasn't a motion, it was an idea. I'm happy to make one.
Sure. Any discussion, further discussion on, I mean, I'm not opposed to, I don't think we need to fight it out either. We can all be civil and have a friendly discussion. But, you know, I would agree, it'd be good to revisit our priorities and make sure we give a good recommendation to the WRWC. Go ahead.
So since we have, as a group, given conflicting and mutually exclusive direction to staff on how to present this worksheet, I think we owe them a little more direction, and I move that we schedule a workshop to decide amongst the commissioners how we want to present the prospective capital services, or was it professional services budget for FY19.
Okay, so now we have a formal motion.
Second.
Second. Do we have any further discussion? Good. I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So I guess if you all, Jim and Chris and Jennifer, if you'd look at calendars, send out some ideas for that, that would be really awesome.
Okay.
Should we vote on donuts? Do we, are we going to need sugar, or like tofu treats or something to keep us all motivated?
As the originator of the motion, certainly not the idea, I will bring the donuts.
Oh, you're hilarious, you don't have to.
What if it's an evening meeting that Commissioner required?
Donuts aren't just for breakfast anymore.
It's pizza. It's always a good time for donuts.
Makes it affluent.
Oh my gosh, all right. Well, so we had that motion, I think we're done with that item, no other motions. Okay, I will close item seven. And thank you all for the discussion, I think it was good. And I look forward to the workshop. I think it was good, and I look forward to the workshop. I'll open item number eight, the Program Managers' Report, and I will turn it over to Mr. Smitherman.
Okay, thank you again. What we have for the Program Managers' Report is generally what you see each month at each meeting, a listing of projects that are underway, and basically their percent complete.
Ranking based on...
Based on the finances, so really. Some of these projects may be further along than they show, but perhaps the contractor bills annually, and so it'll show zero complete until they bill for work done. On the other side, you can see the financial report. So our revenue is more than keeping pace with what our projections are. It looks like we're within 10% of generating the revenue that we had projected this year. And then down at the bottom, you can see the expenditures are significantly under the planned budget, and so we are well within the black and project to finish out the year that way. So if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions? No? Are you sure? I'm just kidding. All right. Well, thank you for the report. And, right, so I do have one public comment card, but because item number eight is a non-action item, I would ask that that public comment comes under item number 12, and that was for Kathy Branhorst, and I don't see her in the audience right now. So having said that, I will move on to item number nine, which is Discussion Regarding Possible Agenda Items for the March 7, 2018 NNWPC Meeting and Other Future Meetings and Possible Direction to Staff.
Okay, what I have for on-deck items for the March 7 meeting would be a report from Roy Johnson, formerly of StanTech, now with Brown and Caldwell, who has been working with the affluent management planning team to develop kind of a presentation on a regional affluent management planning framework. And so that's what we tasked him to do a couple of years ago, I think. This has gone for quite a while, and he has worked diligently in meeting after meeting with the team to develop this framework. So I think by that time, we should be able to have a presentation from him on kind of rounding out what he was hired to do, and then passing it off to the next project or the next agenda item, which would be a proposal for a contract with Nevada Water Innovation Campus for the development, taking Mr. Johnson's work and developing that into more of a affluent management planning guidance document. So that would be where the rubber meets the road, and we actually do some... Get some planning down on paper. So those two items, and then also reviewing the draft tentative budget, as we discussed under item seven today, and then what other actions that may come out of the workshop that we have between now and that time. So with that, I would turn it back to you and any additional agenda items that the commission would like to see on March 7.
Does anyone have any other ideas or comments? Sounds like it'll be a good agenda for that meeting. All right. Okay, I will move on to item number 10, Commission Comments, and I'll start at this end of the table. Commissioner Zimmerman? Anyone? Okay, wait.
Hey, this is my game. No, it's not. I just wanted everybody to know that Tamwa completed the Outlet Channel dredging project at Donner Lake, which was a huge effort, and in particular, commend Bill Hauck for his efforts in coordinating all those activities with multiple agencies in California, federal agencies, numerous consultants, construction in December, running water through a treatment plant, dealing with tribal issues. It was a huge effort that is not yet over, but it was something that was very important to Tamwa and some of the homeowners around Donner Lake. I don't think that lake had been dredged in how many years, Bill? 30 years. 30 years. So a lot of material moved out, and... But just a... You wouldn't think it would cost $2.5 million to move 6,000 yards of material, but it did.
Hmm.
That's an expensive dirt.
Okay. Well...
Wow.
That's all.
Good job. Okay. I just have one brief announcement. I just wanted everybody to know that my agency, the Flood Management Authority, recently released a request for qualifications for environmental services. Some of those services will be focused on the Vista Narrows element of our project, but we will also be soliciting qualifications for environmental services related to our work with the Corps of Engineers and some of the NEPA-related documentation. So the RFQ is available on our website, or anybody who's interested can get in touch with me, and the statements of qualifications would be due on March 14. So nobody else has any other comments, so I will turn it over to staff for item number 11. Do you have any comments? No? All right. And now we are on to item number 12, Public Comment. I do have one card from Kathy Branhorst, but again, I don't see her in the audience. So if nobody else wishes to speak, I will close the public comment. Okay? And with no further objections, I'll make this brief, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.